Hi Leanne.
Hi David.
How's it going? Oh God. Yeah, can you answer me a question? My mom got her first shot.
Yep.
And she had to go to Miriam, whatever, and she's at Cedar Crest. We don't know what's gonna happen, if she's gonna be home. Do you know if they made any accommodations for like, people who might have got the first shot and then having an issue or something? I mean, I don't, I don't know.
I would imagine, I thought they were supposed to hook with the second shot, and you would think someone that was in like Cedar Crest would have a second one.
Well, she's not normally there, so in other words, she had-
She had gotten it through them originally?
No, 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 no. What happened was, my mom was at home, we took her to the senior center, she's 89. She got her first shot, then she had to go to Miriam because she had an issue.
Oh, she's not at the senior center?
Yes, and now she's at Cedar Crest because she has a medical issue. And I asked them about it because she got the shot, they have nothing there.
Well, um, I can give you, you can call Jason Andosha, he would probably be able to help you.
Alright, I'll call, he's at the senior center?
Yeah, he, um, call um, 780-6255.
Alright, I mean, I don't know, we, we've got, uh, waiting for doctors to call and so on.
What did she do for the second one?
I think it's like two weeks, so there's a little bit of time.
Oh alright, yeah, call him tomorrow. And if I talk to him, I'll tell him you're looking to talk to him.
Yeah.
They should be able to make, um, you know, arrangements.
Listen, I'm not looking, I'm not looking for, um, you know, I'll do whatever needs to be done the right way, it's just a matter of-
No, but I'm, I, I, no, I don't think there's any question, but I think if you've gotten it, the first one through them, they have to hook you up with the second one, they can't leave you hanging. Because you gotta match up, right? If she got Moderna, she's gonna get-
Moderna, yeah.
The same thing.
So.
Yeah, but call Jay and he can probably research it for you.
Alright, I will.
Hey everybody.
Hey, how you doing?
How are you?
Good, good, how you doing?
I'm doing good, Chairman Wall, welcome, Mr. Balducci, welcome.
Good evening, good evening.
Good evening, Council President.
Thank you for, thank you for taking the time to be here and, uh, you know, very informal meeting, just wanna go over some stuff and you can fill out, fill the council in on what's going on and what's coming up and all that stuff.
Sure.
Hi Leanne.
Hi.
How was your day today?
It was okay. Sunny, so that always makes the day better. It's been very gray.
Hey Rose, hey Dave.
Hey, Chris, Mari, shorts and a t-shirt.
Shorts and a t-shirt? Then we can, then we can stay on Zoom then. The school committee's back in session, I'm gonna have to give Mike Crudell a call and see how he's, uh, handling that. We're gonna get back soon.
Yeah.
So it's gonna be 70 tomorrow Dave, 60?
Uh, tomorrow's the second best day, they're expecting 70 degrees on Friday. But then it's gonna be, uh, 35 on Saturday.
Yeah, of course. Everybody's day off, it'll snow.
Yeah, well. What do we got? Two minutes, alright, I'll be, I will be right back.
Take your time. Mr. Vice President, how are you sir?
You know, you know, Council President, every time I see you, I, I just feel better about my day, so. You know, that's how I'm feeling, how about you?
I'm doing, doing well now that you're here.
Looking sharp buddy.
Yeah, thanks man. Thanks.
A little blurry, huh?
You are a little blurry. There you go. See that internet connection up in Ward 4?
Must be, you know, we need sewers too.
You're gonna get that Starlink from Elon Musk. Dominic.
Hey Chris, how are you?
Nice to see you sir.
Same, how are things going?
Things are going good.
I see the, uh, winter tree is down.
The, the winter tree is down. Yes. And hopefully my electric bill as well. Dave's telling me it's gonna be 60 tomorrow, people are gonna start asking for the air conditioner.
The tax law changes they made with this new stimulus is, it's amazing.
Really?
Well now, anybody who's filed a return, once it's signed, if you collect an unemployment, the first 10,200 is not taxable. So anybody who's filed a return, they get to amend it. And I was just reading up, I gotta read a little bit more, but the, the advanced tax credit for the help, for people that have lower income, is now being waived. So anybody who paid the credit because they made too much money, they get it back.
That's good.
It, it, agree 110%, the only issue is, I've got 150 returns already filed. So now you gotta go through and figure out who meets the criteria.
Think of it this way though, you, you, you're like Santa Claus, when you go back to people and you say, "I have more money."
That's, at least I'm not telling them they owe, I will say that.
You're gonna work like Santa Claus right before Christmas now.
Well, I think, I think what, what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna establish the list and just do everything after April 15th. Because if they don't extend the tax season, I've gotta get the initial filings in.
So moral of the story, everybody should bring you all their documents April 1st, all your customers-
You know something? For, 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 for once, for once, anybody who didn't wanna rush, they may have benefited. But.
We'll just give another minute or two, see if we get a couple more council members to sign on. I know there's a school building committee meeting going on right now, and, uh, I think-
It's all over.
It's over?
It is.
Wow.
Yes, it's over.
Welcome Janine.
A little, a little sync for you at the evening hour.
Hi Anees, hi John, how are you?
Hi, hi President.
Good, very good, how are you?
Hey Chris, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Hey guys.
Hello.
Hello.
Welcome council members.
Matthew, nice background.
You like that?
Wow, big shot over here, getting fancy on us.
I'm getting tech savvy.
Trying to make, trying to make it so he looks smart, right?
Yeah. I, I've read every one of those.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Alright, is everybody ready, we can get going? Ready's good? Leanne, are you, uh, good to go?
Yeah.
Alright. Good evening everybody, I'd like to call the special meeting of the city council to order. Clerk, will you please take the role?
Housewoman Marino.
President.
Council Fari. Housewoman Ranzilli. Housewoman Vargas. Housewoman Jermaine.
President.
Councilwoman Donigan.
President.
Councilwoman Riley.
Here.
House Office President Brady.
President.
Present. This meeting is called into order in accordance with sections 3.07 and 3.14 of the Home Rule Charter for Wednesday, March 10th at 5:30 PM. We only have one agenda item, informational only, no votes will be taken. This is discussion with the school department, school committee and city council regarding the funding formula and school appropriations. Just want to welcome Councilmember Fari that just logged on, and, uh-
Councilwoman Donigan, I see your hand raised over there.
I, just, for the record, Councilwoman Vargas has a prior work commitment, that's why she's not on the call right now.
Yes, thank you, um, yes, she did, uh, reach out to me, let me know that she did have a prior work commitment, she's gonna try to get on the call, um, as soon as that finishes up. Other than that, um, just wanna add that, uh, the genesis of this meeting is all of the due diligence that Vice President and Finance Chair, uh, Councilmember Brady has been putting in, trying to learn all the formulas and everything that's going on. He requested that we get together and have this meeting. That being said, I'll turn, I'll give the floor to Councilmember Brady in case he has anything to add, and then I think we can start with the school department to give a little presentation, or we can just go from there.
Sure, I mean, you know, I appreciate that opportunity, uh, Council President, obviously we're all on the call for the same reason, actively advocating for additional funding for obviously our, our school department, um, numerous meetings with representatives, obviously that have access to the Speaker of the House and Superintendent and, and many others and teachers, all wondering the same question amongst all of us, how did we drop to $38,000, um, from previous year? Obviously, we've learned that our, our appraised values of homes went up almost a billion dollars, uh, we learned many other elements that have affected this formula, which is now 11 years old, so, uh, having conversations with, uh, Councilmember Jermaine and, and, and her, her knowledge on this topic definitely helped, and, and many, many others, including Representative Barbara Ann Fenton-Fung and, and Representative Boginski, who I, who I know are all also advocating and wanted to be on the call, but they're, they're actually working tonight, um, at the State House, so, I look forward to the presentation, certainly gonna be taking notes. Thank you, Mr. Balducci for being on the call, in addition to our Superintendent, Mr. Strom, the entire school committee, because obviously we're all advocating for the same thing, so, um, that's all I have at the moment.
Thank you, Council Vice President, yes, Sisacco, my colleague, thank you all for being on the call. I know it's been a crazy couple of weeks and, and certainly appreciate your time this evening. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to either Superintendent Nata Massey or, uh, Mr. Balducci, if you have a few words to say or wanna fill us in on why, um, we're here tonight, or let us know anything we should know.
Sure. Uh, good afternoon or good evening everyone, and I do appreciate this opportunity to, uh, share some information with you. I realize that, um, the state aid formula and the funding is a very, very complicated process. It's taken me years to fully understand how, how things develop and how we, um, acquire our funding. This year, we've done, um, a little bit of extra homework, if you will. Joe and I have reached out to as many people either at the Department of Ed, or today, Joe even spoke to someone at the state level to try and get some answers to the questions that you're asking us, or that we've addressed in years past about school funding, um. Joe is gonna walk you through how it is figured, but these school funding formula is about a decade old. So, about 10 or 11 years ago, there was a, um, a work group of people from the state who looked at how schools were funded previously, which, if you think it's kind of random now, it was far worse back then. And you, you really didn't know how much money you were getting. So they put a work group together and they came up with the fair funding formula, and at the time, there was a lot of fanfare around it that, um, some districts would be winners and some districts would be losers. Not my words, but, um, that was kind of how it was known to be. So, we were on the winning end of that, and over 22, I wanna say 22 million dollars was allocated to us over the 10-year span. Well, that formula has kind of expired, for lack of a better term, and now we're, we're at that point where we are today with the, kind of a surprise. Over the past several years, at least since I've been at Central Office, we've been, very fortunate to have a lot of money coming to us from the state. And every year it increases a couple of million, 2 million, 3 million, 4 million. Even last year, although we had to wait for it, we were given 4.1 million dollars from the state in addition, you know, as an increase. So, the idea of only getting $36,000 extra, you know, as an increase for the fiscal year, which will begin in July, is rather stunning to us. So, we did a lot of, um, homework to try and figure out why that is. So, the nitty gritty stuff, I'm gonna turn over to Joe, because, um, that is his area of expertise. And I would strongly encourage you to stop us as we're talking, because this is very complicated, and, and you're gonna get the, you know, school finance primer right now, which is not deep enough, but will give you, what, you know, the 30,000-foot view of what's happening, so, um. Alright, any questions so far? Alright, hit it Joe.
Okay, thank you, Janine, um, good evening everyone. The only additional comment I'll make regarding the, um, when the fair funding formula first came into existence, again, you're right, over that timeframe, there was a transition period. So, the winners, uh, received their additional funding over a seven-year period. The ones that, uh, the losers, um, received their reduction over a 10-year period. So again, that's what brings us to today. Um, I know, I, I asked the city clerk to send out a communication to you folks, uh, that had a, a PDF attached to it that has several, uh, pages, um, of supporting documents. I'll gladly go into the weeds if you'd like, but what I'd like to do is just, I'll give you that 30,000-foot explanation right now, and then by all means, you know, please, uh, ask me to, all questions you, um, you need to ask me. So the fair funding formula is made up of, of three components. It is made up of our, um, average daily membership, or you may wanna call it school, um, student enrollment, uh, so that's one piece. And that's, and then you, for each of those students, you receive what's called a core value. So every school district in the state of Rhode Island receives that amount of aid, and next year, that is scheduled to be $10,635, and I'm taking that figure off of page one of the, um, document that was shared to you, uh, over the weekend. The other piece, so first you have the core value, multiplied by, again, the number of students. Then the second piece of the equation is what's referred to as a student success factor. And that is defined by the number of students that are either receiving free or reduced, uh, lunch applicant, um, services within the district. So, uh, based on our number, um, that's approximately, um, or the value, what they do is they take 40% of the core amount, and that becomes the, uh, additional aid you receive for each of those students that are either considered free or reduced. The third piece of the computation, the state refers to it as the state share ratio. So is, it is the contribution year over year on how much the state is obligated to give you of that total aid. So you, you put all those pieces of information into the formula, and the end result is, um, total aid. And then basically what they do is they compare that total aid to the previous year's total aid, and thus the increase or possibly decrease, based on either a loss in, um, student enrollment, or for whatever reason, if the core value goes down year over year.
Joe, do you mind if I ask a quick question on that?
By all means.
Um, so, in the middle of a pandemic, obviously I know that one of these, when you're making these types of formulas, uh, at a state level, no one could obviously assume that we would be in the middle of a pandemic, so, how does free or reduced lunches, when attendance goes down, affect the formula? Or does it statewide?
It, it will affect the formula, but however, what RIDE decided to do, the snapshot of your student enrollment is usually the October 1, uh, date. So normally, this past October, they would take those, uh, that student data and roll that into the formula. But clearly RIDE knew that statewide, that was gonna be an issue, because of pandemic. So what they decided to do was use as their starting point, March of, um, 20 data. So they went back, because they felt that that put all districts in a better position as far as student enrollment, uh, free, reduced and so forth, so that became their starting point. Because if they did use the October 1 enrollment date, every school district in the state would have been, would have been hurt. So they did take that into consideration.
Thank you.
You're welcome, um, so, again, and not to pick on the state share ratio, um, because Cranston is lucky enough where our enrollment is pretty, pretty consistent year over year. Um, so that's good, and the, the core value, and the way the core value is calculated, they actually look at cost of education in Rhode Island, and then also the other New England states. And they come with, they come up with an average of, of what they believe education, uh, costs, again, in the, in the New England region. So that's how they determine the core value. The difficult piece of this is to guesstimate year over year on what that, that state share contribution rate is gonna be. So what caused the problem, um, this year, last, next year as compared to this year? This year, in the year we're in, the state is obligated to pay 56.1% of the total cost of education. Next year, that percentage is going down to 54.5%. So we're losing 1.6 percentage points. And it may not sound like a lot, but when you're talking about the amount of aid we receive, that's a significant, um, loss in aid.
That percentage Joe, how is that, how is that, why did we go down?
It's a great question, and, and as the Superintendent alluded to, um, I tried to become more educated on that, and I reached out to the Office of Municipal Affairs and spoke to the, um, segment of that, uh, agency that kind of works with the municipalities to come up with this. Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put a piece of paper in front of my, um, screen, just to show you, one of the, the documents that was shared with me, that's just to tell you how difficult it is. I mean, this is basically a, a state, you know, all of the municipalities and how data is received and, uh, uploaded to municipal affairs, uh, and they, they do some calculations with it, to come up with the final, um, share ratio. But, basically, I'll, I'll throw out some terms that were given to me. The reference, the assessed valuation reference year that was used to determine next year's contribution, is that, they, dates back to December 31st, 2017. So that's the reference year that the state is using to determine next year's aid. They told me that particular, uh, assessed date, Cranston went through a statistical revaluation, and based on that, their assessed values went up approximately 8.8%. They then compared that to the rest of the state. They told me again today, that the rest of the state, on average, the, the assessed valuations went up 4%. So then they, then they say, okay, how, how does Cranston relatively compare to the rest of the state? Some of the other, um, terms they threw out to me, um, they also look at sales, the, the, the sales of homes, uh, in your, in your particular municipality, how does that compare to the rest of the state? They look at your median house income in, in Cranston, how does that compare to the rest of the state? Again, I can't tell you today what happens with all of that data, but those are the types of datas that they're looking at, reference points, to determine if that share ratio goes up or down year over year. So I'm not sure if that answered your question, I mean, I wish I had a better answer, but-
Yeah, I mean Director, I mean, I know that we're, you know, essentially becoming, you know, a better appraised value community, which is certainly a good thing, but at the same time, it negatively affects the funding formula, which gets us less aid, when the schools obviously essentially need it. So, I, I, it does, but I mean, it would be great to get a more in-depth answer from them on other areas that we can improve upon with, um, affordable housing throughout the, throughout the city, um, other areas that we could, I, I, because I know that was thrown at me in a meeting, that we could improve on that, which would improve this formula, but, you know, obviously the goal is just to continue to all learn the formula, because I think we would probably advocate next year, knowing that it being 11 years old should be relooked at anyways. So, uh, that's kind of where I stand, I appreciate your answer on that, and I'll let you continue, I apologize.
Hey Joe, Joe, this is Bob Strom, I got a question for you.
Yes.
When they said 2017 statistical revale year.
Yes.
Now, we had that revale year, as you stated, in 17, and we're having another one now, uh, and 23 years later, uh, did all, they're comparing us to communities, not all of them had a revale that year, is that correct? Do we know that? Because if they did, it should be more proportional if everybody had a revale in the same year. If you didn't have a revale, naturally Cranston would be much higher, based on a revale.
And Bob, I agree with you, I mean, the, the reference year is 2017, correct? A number of municipalities probably did not have a revale, Cranston, that particular year did, and I, I think, again, I think we're being penalized, because again, you're right, um, when you look at Cranston's data, in, you know, in relative, um, comparison with the rest of the state, correct?
And the other-
That could happen the following year.
Go ahead.
No, I mean, that could happen, you know, when they, when they look at 2018, for, you know, 2022, or 23, same thing could happen in other municipalities, you're right.
Yeah, and, and the other point I wanted to make is that, you know, the median, uh, household income, that's, that was a factor in us getting distressed, uh, community money. Because we, well, there was three indices that affected it, and that was one of them, and that gave us, put us in a position to get, uh, more distressed, uh, community money.
Bob, what is the delay, or what is the timeframe for them to determine distressed community? Does it go back four years, or is it a more immediate impact?
I believe-
Joe and I were talking about that, how can we have a distressed community, but yet our assessed property values went up 8.8%?
And they, and they're basing it, Janine, on the, uh, uh, median, uh, household, uh, income. And that's a factor in computing the distressed income. So, I believe it's over a three-year period, but, uh, I'm not quite sure how they, uh, calculated, I'd have to check into that further, but I know that it's, it's a three-year period based on how much you receive and how you're phased out of it, if you're entitled to, to be phased out based on your, uh, uh, money and revenue.
Well, just for argument's sake, I want everyone to know that our, um, levels of free and reduced price lunch, which is our, um, indicator of poverty, has really remained consistent, it hasn't gone up or down, um, very much over the past several years. We have about, between 38 and 40% free and reduced price lunch students, and that has been consistent, so, um, again, you know, coming, coming out of the, um, recession that we had, you know, that had, that had, um, raised our free and reduced lunch, but after that, it's been pretty steady, so, um, you know, people have asked me if our numbers have changed much in there, and they really haven't. Our population, as well as the free and reduced price lunch population had- Our population, as well as the free and reduced price lunch population, have been very consistent.
The one of the comments I'd like to make, so again, the total state aid education to the district year over year. I mean, a piece of it is the formula aid that we're discussing this evening. But there are other components of the of the total age aid packet that comes to the district. And that's in one of the other documents I shared with everyone. We do receive funding for an area referred as high-cost special education. That is, I'll, I'll call that a categorical, categorical piece. And then the, we don't enjoy it, but I guess other districts enjoy what's called group home aid. So again, if there is a group home located in a municipality that the students, I mean, the children from that group home attend public school. And the public school receives, I believe, at the time, the figure may have changed, but approximately fifteen thousand per student. That's attending the the public school system from that group home. We don't have that because if you look at, again, the documents I shared with you, the group home aid, it is reflecting zero contribution. But again, I just don't want anyone to think that, again, there are other pockets that roll up to the final aid aid amount. Other than just the formula.
Thank you, Mr. Balducci.
You're welcome.
Any questions from council members or comments? Or anything, Director Strom, do you want to follow up on anything before we?
Yeah, thank you, Grog Councilman. One of the things I I see that submitted to us was what they call a state share ratio for the formula. And it, and one of the things that concerns me is that it shows Barrington with a percent change from FY twenty twenty one as an increase of five point one percent. East Greenwich, three point two percent. Gloucester and Foster, Gloucester, three point eight percent. So there's, uh, communities that are having an increase, Smithfield, three point two percent. But yet they're showing Cranston as a reduction of negative one point six percent. I I question how, when they do this calculation and formula, how these other communities who I'm sure have a a a higher, uh, household, uh, income. That they get, it's a, it's a higher percent and and it seems like they're going to be getting additional monies. Uh, so to speak, and I'll, I'll say it publicly on our back.
Thank, thank you, Director. Any questions or comments from council members? Now, so Vice President Brady.
You know, Director Strom, I thought that was a great point. Also, a question that I asked. When meeting with our state representation, they're going back and hopefully getting us some additional information on that. Mr. Balducci, did, I also had one additional question. I don't know if you have the answer to it, but it was a question that I asked. When I, after I met with our school committee, Dan Wall, Mr. Traf and Mr. Jaketa. I wanted to ask about specifically with the state because they said that attendance might have an effect on this formula. Do you know anything about that or how that would potentially affect this formula?
In in a, in a normal year, it would have an impact. However, as I stated earlier, RIDE felt it was more beneficial to all the districts to use a reference point, a year old, pre-pre pandemic. To use as 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 the, as a reference point for the calculation. But you're right, if if they would not, if they were using the normal October one date. We, we, it'd be definitely a much different conversation. We'd probably be, instead of gaining only thirty six thousand, we'd be losing probably a million dollars if you used our October one number. But again, as I mentioned earlier, that situation would have occurred statewide. Because of the whole attendance and everything going on. So I think that's the reason why, why RIDE made that decision.
I appreciate that. You know, and also if Councilmember Jermaine wouldn't mind speaking, I know that we had a very passionate conversation on this topic. And, you know, I'd love to get a little bit of her input on, on her knowledge on the subject matter, if she doesn't mind.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Thank you, Superintendent Nudhamasi, and all the school committee. And also Mr. Balducci and what you work you've been doing at this school level. So as you know, I am really passionate about school and education. Equitable education, equitable funding. And as I shared with many of you. So I knew this formula, whether it worked in the past, but is not a good formula. So it's not equitable. So if we want to do things in a lens, equitable lens, we need to change the formula. So I knew it since the beginning, you know. So my question is always, how can we have, like, based on the formula or the property taxes on the evaluation? We lose money while we know. So we have distressed community in our city. So how, how we can determine? So we have an evaluation, we show that we are rich, right? Is that for me? That's what I understand. We are rich so much that we don't need too much money from this state. But this is not true. So what do we do? Where do we make a mistake? Something that is calculated that shouldn't be calculated that way. So there's some way, somewhere, something in that is not right. So we know we have distressed community in our city. And I cannot believe that we lose money because for some figures show that we are rich. We don't need help. And we do need help. So and we know that school budget always got. And school always, education always underfunded. So now we still, we we lose more. And where we're going to have this money? And we have our children to educate. We have our teachers that needs a raise. They are the backbone of our society. So my, that's why I was thinking, we need to change the formula, period. We need to have a budget that reflect what education spend for. As any other department, okay? So how we determine for medic, medical? How we determine for safety? So we need to find a way to calculate the budget for education in equitable way. So when we have a great doctor, we have a great lawyer, those teachers are the one that fund it. So it's time to understand that education cannot keep having leftover. That's how he always be leftover after all other department have what they need. And then we cut, we give a little bit to the education. Our teachers need ways and I spoke with our superintendent, they have planned on this money. They plan on this money for our teachers. We see in this pandemic how our teachers work so hard. And we plan, they plan to give them a raise. So now with this decrease, what we're going to do? So my take is change the formula and change the formula at the state level. Change the formula at the local level to see how we can have a budget where we do not have the burden on where we're going to find the money. So I don't know right now. And I know if all of you received this letter coming out last, this week. Our properties evaluation assessment, it went up and people get it freaked out. People getting upset and and we don't know what's going to happen. So now the, 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 the right thing to do is all of us. We need to make sure we fund our education properly. The same way we find a way, I don't know what formula for all the department. But education is equally important as all of those aspects in our lives. And the children, when we are educated today, that's the one that will build the future. So we need to give them equal access, equal education. But with this formula is inequitable. And this inequitable formula, he gets that impact on the way the allocation is being done on the, at like local level. So as I share with you, Council Brady, we need, you have work to do. And as you know, I am working on, we are working, right? In a resolution to, you know, urge the state, anyone who is listening. We need to do things differently. It's time to take education really seriously. Because, you know, we minimize education for too long. It's been minimized for too long. We cannot keep doing leftover, give leftover. We need a proper budget as any other department for education. And that way we will not have to sit quietly to figure out, to try to figure out how we're gonna, uh, uh, fill this gap. There is a big gap here and this gap will be filled in low, our distressed community. The pandemic opened our eyes. For some of eyes that were closed. And for some that were open, it's opening wider. So we need money for quality education, for quality teachers. We cannot ask our teachers more if we cannot give them what they deserve. And that's why I urge, I know it's, there is no, there's nothing we can do. This, the way it stands right now, something must be done poorly. I don't know where. But something has to be done right now to make it right. And what can make it right right now at this moment? I don't know yet, but I know we need to change it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jermaine. Any other?
President, I just want to clarify one thing that Councilwoman Jermaine mentioned. Is that the evaluations that came out that people received are based on vision appraisal, based on the market and house values. However, the tax rate will change accordingly as well. So if someone gets an increase in their value, they cannot use the tax rate that's currently in place. Because that's going to distort the taxes that they think they're going to pay, and that is not correct. Thank you.
Thank you for your clarification on that, Director. Any other council members or school committee members have any comments?
Can I jump into, over the past several years, there has been an increase in house building on the western side of the city. Near Pippin Orchard Road, over near Hope Highlands. So again, I would wonder if all of those new homes and the new tax revenue that those new homes and new housing developments are bringing in, could that have also tipped the scales? I don't want to say against us because it is an increase in in revenue and in homes, but those are homes that are probably being sold for four hundred to six hundred, close to seven hundred thousand dollars on this side of the city. On the western side. And I'm just wondering if, you know, some of those were building permits that were given out twenty years ago. And they were just never built on because of the recession and, you know, the economy. Well, now all of those homes are coming online. Could that have been, again, a factor in that, Bob?
Yes, Superintendent. However, keep in mind, when you build homes, there's increased costs involved too. There's more, uh, bill.
More kids in the schools. More kids in the schools. I'm well aware. Yeah.
Yeah, more kids in the school, more public safety, busing. There's, there's things to offset that revenue. So it's not like when they put the development in that you're getting a, a big windfall of revenue and extra money. That's not how it works.
That's not what I meant. I I meant that is the state considering an increase in the revenue, is the state considering the average median income to be different? Because of an increase in in the citizenry who have higher incomes. Don't worry, Bob, I know you're not flush with cash, right?
No, I, I think you would have to really contact the state to to see how they calculate it. I would say the value of the properties would be up. But I don't know how they determine the medium household. And also keep in mind, if they base it on two thousand seventeen, a lot of things are not developed. They're maybe being developed now or in the process. So I, I don't know what the state used exactly. We'd have, they'd have to provide that calculation to us.
Go.
Councilmember Fusco, Councilmember, I promoted you, School, School Committee, Min Fusco.
Thank you. So Councilman Brady, I also reached out to our state delegation. And I don't know if they told you this, but one of the things that came back to me was that the and Councilwoman Jermaine might be interested in this too, is that the the original fair funding formula stated that it had to be readressed in ten years. But because of the pandemic, it got pushed out. So I think, you know, to like Councilwoman Jermaine said, I think we need to keep in touch with our state leaders to make sure that state representatives that that gets done this year. And that, you know, we look for a more equitable way because to like Mr. Strom said, I mean, the increase to Barrington is probably going to, is probably equivalent to a ten million dollar increase, Mr. Balducci and I would talk about it to us. And it just, it doesn't make sense how some of these districts are just changing rapidly like that and we're losing so much. But anyway, that's all I wanted to see if that, if you heard that as well.
Yeah, Mr. Fusco, I I did hear that. And, you know, basically, the answer that I received back was it's not something that would be able to change before this budget season. Which obviously wasn't the best answer that I wanted to receive, but it's certainly something that needs to be on all of our radar. If we can, in fact, fix it by this budget season, it should be something that we're all advocating for. And I certainly will be on on my end to get it addressed for next year because it's eleven years old.
Yeah, and I was, you know, to show you how thrilling my life is. I was on one of the education, the Senate Education Committee meetings they had on statewide interconnect. And I forget his name, the senator from Tucket actually said that they did a lot of work last year and they were ready to go and present it until the pandemic hit. So there should be something at least on the table that they can start discussing. But who knows the way they operate sometimes.
Who was that, Senator?
Can't think of his name.
Tucket.
Pearson, Pearson. Yeah, yeah, I think it was Pearson.
Thank you.
Council President.
Chairman Wong.
Thank you. Just, just to weigh in and, you know, I couldn't agree more with what Councilman Brady said. That it's definitely very important to speak to our delegation. I know members of the school committee have also reached out and spoke to them. Just give me my, you know, as I was thinking about this. I took last year's figures and I I cross referenced them with this year's figures. And, you know, there's a lot of questions on how this happened. And I checked my numbers with Mr. Balducci just to make sure my rudimentary math skills were were good. But it appears to me that there's really three different factors. And Joe, please jump in if I'm making a mistake. There's something called the total core instructional funding. Which kind of takes in our student enrollment and and it comes up with a figure based on that. And looking at that, I wondered if we had lost students and and Joe. Am I, am I right in assuming that this year our funding, it it shows that we lost approximately twenty one students? And Joe would say that was an estimation regarding achievement for us. Is that correct, Joe?
You are correct. Again, writers of the opinion that, again, the, the only charter school large enough that we, that would have a significant impact on our state aid. uh, impact, uh, on our state aid would be achievement first. So what they do is they make an assumption on how many additional students will leave the district next year to go to achievement first. They use twenty-one students as their guesstimation, and that's the reason for the reduction, correct?
Thank you. And, and, and I checked this figure with Joe. It, it still showed our core instructional funding amount, that, that factor uh, rising by a little over three million dollars, right, Joe?
Correct.
Okay, then, uh, I, I, I looked at the other, the other section, and, you know, this was very difficult. It was kind of, um, the, the poverty, poverty, um, factor. Uh, I forget what they're calling it, the R A D M. And that factor, um, it still showed us increasing by about four hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So a- as I'm reading through this, I'm feeling like the numbers are going in the right direction. It wasn't until I got to the, um, I guess what they're calling it basically our wealth factor, um, the E W A V, the total assessed value, the median income, and somehow they put them all together. And as I did speak to, you know, people in the General Assembly, I've yet to come across anyone. And this is not an insult to anyone and, and, you know, who could give me a clear understanding of what this was. Um, and I remember when the, you know, the, uh, fair funding formula came out, and we were all pretty happy about it, Rhode Island having a fair funding formula. Um, but one of the things in the beginning of the law, they talk about a transparent funding system. And I'll be honest with you, I, I haven't found anybody who can give me any clarity on, on this one, but the devil's in the details here, and I'd say if you're going to advocate, advocate for that end of the fair funding formula because that's really where I believe it skewed. All right, sorry to take so long and go a little bit around in circles. Uh, thank you, Council President.
Chairman, very insightful, and thank you very much. Um, any other questions or comments from any of the members here? Uh, Budget Analyst DeMaio.
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Balducci, based on the stimulus package that just passed and the economic downturn that we had in the current period, do you think they're going to revisit what they feel the economics of wealth in each of the cities across the board will be going forward and maybe fund the shortfall that's been created in a lot of cities and towns?
That's a great question. Um, I wish I had the answer to that. I mean, I do know that in the latest stimulus package, there is money coming to take K twelve education. Um, however, I don't know if it's targeted monies that we have to use a certain way. Um, I mean, we were lucky enough to get two point seven, uh, under President, um, uh, Trump, which again gave us a lot of latitude on how that money could be spent toward reopening the schools. So again, I don't know what this latest round or what that's going to mean. Uh, but you're right, they may, they may in fact take that into consideration. I just don't know.
And, and one last question, um, based on the current, um, situation that's going on going forward to school in this current year's budget, do you think that the school may have a surplus due to the extra funding that's coming in the current year, um, going forward?
I mean, I will tell you, um, I am seeing, seeing areas of my budget that, um, I am running a surplus. But unfortunately, I'm seeing other areas of the budget because of the pandemic that I'm running in a deficit position. So I don't know what that's going to mean, bottom line, but this is the time of year where I will, like the city, as we're both entering the fourth quarter of our fiscal year. I'll take a deeper dive into the budget to see where I think it's going to end up, uh, before we close the books on June thirtieth.
And just one last question, is there any additional funding from the previous stimulus pass packages that the school has not received yet and is anticipating receiving?
No, we, we're not bashful. We received two point seven, and we've, um, pretty much spent two point seven. We're just waiting for a couple more bills to come in from the vendor. But the funds have been committed, so no, there is, um, no available stimulus money left.
And is there any additional coming, um, that you're aware of?
Again, the, the one that's hopefully going to be signed, uh, by President Biden soon, there's supposed to be, again, aid coming to K twelve, but, um, I don't know how much is coming to Rhode Island. And then of the Rhode Island total package, how much is coming to Cranston?
Thank you very much. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I just want to jump in. When we talk about stimulus money, we treat that like a grant. That's, um, usually has strings attached to it, like the CARES money that we had, it had to be spent on very specific things tied to the pandemic. That's not something we would assume in our regular budget process because next year we won't have that. So we can't count on that money being there because it won't be there next year. And if we did, we would create our own structural deficit. So even when the money may come in to the Fed, um, to the city from the feds, I, I know that when we look at money like that, it really is kind of like a gift. You don't count on that because next year it won't be there. Um, so we consider that a grant. It has, um, conditions tied to it. It really is kind of like bonus money. Um, but we know next year that won't be there. So even with the CARES money that we got, we spent it on things very specific to a, a one-time cost. We couldn't hire people. We, you know, because if you hire someone, then you own them, and then the increased cost is there next year. So, um, everyone talks about the stimulus money like it's a panacea, and it's not because I'm not saying you did, Dave, but, you know, everyone thinks like we're, we're, you know, rolling around in the dough here from CARES money, and it's, we used it very specifically, so I just kind of throw that out there.
The reason for the question was more to anticipate what's coming forward for this fiscal budget we're in now and making sure that what's there is going to cover to get us to the end and then forecast forward for the next fiscal budget. It's, it's more to understand that we're not going to have a shortfall and then have an additional, excuse me, an additional shortfall going forward. Because then that just, that just, it's just a rolling or the snowball effect, and we're trying to dig ourselves up. That was the mainstay for the question.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Thank you. Uh, I see, uh, Councilmember Marino's hand up.
Thank you, Council President. Um, I just want to say that even before today, like, like some others, you know, I had reached out to find out, you know, what was the real issue with the state and the funding formula, trying to make sense of it, seeing that Barrington had a huge increase in such a small student population. And I, I, just like many of you, I didn't get the answers that I either liked or could fully concretely um, say, oh, I got it. Um, with that being said, we're going to beg as much as we can, I'm sure many of us on this call, um, for the state to give us more. But I, in being realistic, we are not going to see the money that we want to see. So we, as a city, are going to have our work cut out for us in trying to fund the schools in the best way we can with the budget up ahead. Uh, you know, we've all said that the schools are a priority. We're going to have to make it a priority. We're going to have to bend over backwards and do what we can to find the money, um, and try and make this happen. But to, to sit here tonight and say that, you know, the state's going to come in, swoop in, save us, I, I'm not confident that's going to happen. The second piece I'll say is with the funding formula, we all agree it has to improve. We've said that, but it's not going to happen now. We, we've just said it. Uh, we'll work on it, you know, to, so that we hopefully won't be in the, in this position next year, but, um, it's not going to save us now. Um, that, and that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Marino. I, I saw, um, uh, school committee member, uh, Tindall Woodman's hands up first, and then I'll go to Councilmember Rinzouli.
Thank you very much. Um, first of all, I just want to say thank you all for, for having us here tonight. Um, my question, I, I don't really know who to direct this to, so, uh, please forgive my ignorance, but, um, my question is more related to, um, say, we are questioning the accuracy of the data that is put into the funding formula that has given us this, um, for lack of a better term, inadequate increase in state aid for the next year. How best can we go about digging into that accuracy, whether it's, uh, from what Mr. Strom uh, mentioned regarding the two seventeen, twenty seventeen data as compared to other cities and towns that may not have had a reevaluation in twenty seventeen or some other perhaps error that was made? I, I'm just concerned that there's nobody that's, not to say Mr. Balducci isn't or anyone else isn't, but digging into the very basics of the data that they're using to come up with this money figure.
Thank you very much.
Our, our population data that they pull, um, is accurate because we made sure, because that was our first question when this came out, like, oh, did, did we do something? Did our population change? So we went back and looked at our, um, our data that is submitted to Ride pretty much on a daily basis. Um, and then when the Department of Ed decided to use the March twenty snapshot pre-COVID, we went back and made sure that what they were getting, um, was accurate. And I will say there was a time a few years ago, um, when our free and reduced lunch numbers were inaccurate that were given to Ride and um, we were told in no uncertain terms that we were wrong. So we may, you know, we learned from that and made sure that the data that was going to ride was accurate. So our population data and our attendance data is as accurate as we can get it. And that's really the thing that we give them. Um, like Joe said, we, we don't have any more of the, we used to have a, a a group home, but we don't have that anymore. So, um, and, and just something else, someone else asked me if we get additional funding for students who are multi-language learners or special education students. Those are considered in categorical funding, so that's more of the, um, variable funding that we would get. It is not considered in state aid. The state aid is really the attendance and the free and reduced lunch numbers. So, um, in case anyone was wondering, I wanted to make sure everyone knew that. But as far as the other stuff, um, Sarah, I'm not that, you know, that's the city, the city side and what they give them as far as the, or, or vision appraisal or whomever, so.
Yeah, just to, just to clarify, I, I wasn't, um, talking about necessarily the data that the Cranston, uh, school department gives to Ride, but rather Ride's calculations using whatever data they're using. For example, that, um, median income that Dan was referring to a little bit ago, in addition to when Mr. Strom was discussing the twenty seventeen reevaluation data. So I just wanted to clarify, I wasn't talking about the info you guys are giving out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you know, I, I, we're accountable too, and I, I did want to make sure everyone knew we, you know, triple-checked our numbers. But that's, that's our question as well. How come all of a sudden this is happening? Um, but yeah, I, I get it.
Thank you. Uh, just to, um, let everybody know, I just got a text message from, uh, Mr. Pykel. They have a zoning, uh, board meeting at six thirty, and we all share the same Zoom. So unfortunately, we need to wrap this up in a few minutes so they can start their meeting. I don't want to hold them up or make them have to cancel their meeting if possible. Um, so we got a few more minutes here, but I just wanted to point that out. Uh, Councilwoman Rinzouli, you've been waiting patiently. I will pass.
Um, my, my comments slash questions are similar to, to Sarah's and Mr. Walsh. I'm just wondering who can answer for us why there's no, you know, transparency portal regarding this kind of funding? Like the state puts in an effort to have transparency portals for all different departments, but we can't get any answers. And, you know, it would, I'm, it wouldn't be simple for them to do, but it would, you know, be becoming of them to get all this information out there. So we're not, you know, chasing our tails every year. I don't know if we have to do that through our state delegation or what, but I, there's a transparency portal for almost every department in the state, but not, not for Ride and not for this formula. So that's one thing. And my, I just had a quick question, Superintendent. Do we, and excuse my ignorance for not knowing, the, um, students that come into the Career and Technical Center at Cranston West from other cities, does money come with them? Yes. Okay. All right. Thank you.
We, we get tuition paid to us from different districts.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rinzouli. Uh, Councilman Ferry.
Yes, I have a very quick question. I always take a very simple approach to finances. The question is, did we spend the entire twenty twenty budget? I mean, is every penny used up? Or is there any money left over to carry on to twenty twenty-one?
So I'll, I'll answer that question. So, um, when we shut down operations back in March, um, we had no buses on the road. Uh, there were certain other expenses we did not incur. So, yes, so, um, we basically made some decisions. Um, so we did close the year out with about a hundred and some odd thousand dollar, um, operating budget. However, we were prudent in reserving some dollars in areas where not knowing what this school year was going to bring as far as trying to reopen the school and so forth. So we reserved some dollars in the area of technology, custodial, and, uh, security. Uh, we also were prudent in making a substantial contribution to our capital reserve fund, which we use to pay for small-priced construction, uh, projects that we do not have to go then to the city and use C bond dollars. So we were able to make a transfer of about seven hundred and fifty thousand, uh, into that fund. Where normally, in a normal year, I would probably make somewhere between two hundred fifty to four hundred thousand dollar contribution. But I, again, I was lucky enough to make a, a, a larger than normal contribution into the fund. So the, to answer your question, the going down to the bottom line, I'll call it, or the surplus was about a hundred and some odd thousand after we made certain reservations or transfers into other funds. So the, so are there any funds available? No. Because again, decisions were made prior to, uh, us closing out the fiscal year to try to help us into this year. And again, try to put some additional resources in a capital reserve fund.
So the only money left over was a hundred thousand dollars?
But from a, from a budget to actual standpoint, correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm getting phone calls from angry zoning board people that want to do their meeting. So we have to really wrap this up. Uh, Councilmember Riley, Councilmember Donigan, if you can go extremely quick because they are waiting.
Yes, all I wanted to know was with the cyclical nature of the state share portion, the component three, where this year we got the short end of the stick and our increase is only thirty-six thousand as compared to other cities and towns. Has there in past years been situations where Barrington, for example, only got thirty-six thousand and we got two million? Has this, has this occurred with other cities and towns? Is this just our year to get the short straw?
That's a great question. I, in prior years, I haven't compared us to other, other school districts because I haven't had the need. Because again, we've been getting our three point five and four million dollar increases. Once I see that, I'm happy, I move on. But you're right. I mean, I would have to go back. I mean, there, there is, the data is available on Ride's website for the fat, for, for the past few years to see year over year, what type of increases or decreases have taken place in other municipal, uh, other school districts as compared to Cranston. I don't know that right now, but it's something I could, I, I can get for you.
Thank you, Mr. Balducci. Thank you, uh, Councilmember Riley.
Thank you.
Councilmember Donigan, you have the last word.
Very quickly, um, I just, I think we all share, uh, the same conclusion that, uh, this does need to be addressed, the, the funding. Um, at the same time, I do share, um, uh, the, the sentiment expressed by Councilwoman Marino that it's not going to change for this year, and, uh, we've all said it, education is a priority. The budget's coming up in two, in two, three weeks, um, and we're going to have to make difficult decisions. Uh, but it's essential that we make education our priority, um, throughout that process. Um, and we're going to have to, we're going to have to step up. Um, but thank you for putting this together.
Okay, with that, I'm going to, I'm going to wrap up. I just want to thank everybody for being here tonight. Um, obviously, education is a priority for all of us. Um, you know, call, call your state, um, delegation. I completely understand, um, that it might not happen this year, but we need to try. And like, uh, Councilmember Donigan said, the budget comes up in a few weeks. That being said, uh, I would attend a motion to adjourn so zoning board can start.
Motion to adjourn.
Give a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks.